We can go ahead and get started. We have reconvened from closed session and there is nothing to disclose. So we will adjourn the special meeting at 6:04 PM and transition here into our regular meeting. I'd like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council Regular Meeting. Today is Wednesday, March the 8th, 2023. It is 6:04 PM. Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T/U-verse cable systems. Meetings being closed caption will be webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight's meeting replays will be on Friday, March 10th at 1:00 PM and Sunday, March 12th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. Previous meetings can be viewed online at www.elkgrovecity.org or youtube.com/metrocable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the city council meeting. City council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the city council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete a speaker card. There are the blue cards, which can be found at the back of the chamber, and provide them to Assistant City Clerk Brenda Haggard prior to consideration of the agenda item. With that, that will move us to Section 1 of our agenda, the Call to Order and Roll Call. And starting from that roll call, I will start with Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Councilmember Brewer.
Here.
Councilmember Suen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Spies.
Present.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here.
All are present.
All right, thank you. Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to call on the General Manager of the CSD, Josh Green, to lead us in the pledge this evening.
(Inaudible) pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you, sir. All right, at this time, please join me in a brief moment of silence. Thank you. All right, next up is our approval of the agenda. May I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, closed session.
And under Section 3, there are no closed session items on the regular agenda, which will advance us to Section 4, our Presentations and Announcements, starting with Item 4.1, which is a proclamation declaring March 5th through the 11th, 2023, as Women in Construction Week.
Excellent. Rena Goudy, is it, and I hope I'm saying it correctly. Is it Goudy?
Yes.
Okay, if you would please come forward. Rena is with the National Association of Women in Construction, Sacramento member of DPR Construction. All right, Women in Construction Week, March 5th through the 11th. Whereas the National Association of Women in Construction Sacramento Chapter Number 63 has distinguished itself for 60 years as the voice of women in construction in Sacramento region as well as Northern California, and whereas the work done by the Sacramento Chapter of NAWIC has benefited the region through community development and educational programs, and whereas the Sacramento Chapter of NAWIC has increasingly promoted the employment and advance of women in construction industry, and whereas the construction community represented by the Sacramento Chapter of NAWIC has been a driving force in fostering community development through renovation and beautification projects, promotion of skilled trades careers, and a positive vision of the future, and whereas the Sacramento Chapter of NAWIC has sought to achieve successful results for the Sacramento region and surrounding area in a cooperative spirit with other organizations. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby affirms and proclaims the week of March 5th through the 11th, 2023, as Women in Construction Week, and recognizes the National Association of Women in Construction Sacramento Chapter Number 63. NAWIC has many dedicated volunteers that provide steadfast work on behalf and in support of women in construction, and we encourage our residents to congratulate the organization for their many accomplishments, signed this day. Congratulations.[332.12][332.12](Applause). Would you like to say anything?
On behalf of our chapter, now with Sacramento Chapter 63, we are honored and appreciate the support and recognition of women in construction. It's not an easy industry, and together we are making a difference.
Thank you. If you stay put, we will come down and present this for you.
(Inaudible) moment. Just dated myself with that room.
It's okay.
Hi.
You too. Thank you. Do your service.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
This is for you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
All right.
You ready?
Yes.
All right, one, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have public comment.
Looks like you have a speaker, don't you? No, okay, sorry.
Okay.[429.12][429.12](Laughter). Actually, we do.
But that's on public comment, sorry.
Yeah. Okay. You threw me off.
I threw you off, it's my fault.
All right, next up is public comment. We have one person signed up to speak, Mike Dobson. If he would come forward. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen, Vice Mayor Spies, members of the council. While I am an Elk Grove resident, I'm here tonight as a member of Casuna CSD to give a big public thank you to your Police Chief Bobby Davis. On February 25th, we have an annual event for our senior kind of lead part-time staff that we call Casuna's Leadership Development, where we work on giving them not only skills for them to excel with us as part-time staff, but also leading into, I guess, full-time employment, ideally with us or other government agencies, but just whatever their passion lies. And the chief came out as a member of our professional panel. I know our relationship with the CSD, and you guys, has always been very longstanding, very positive. Our relationship from my vantage point in recreation with the police department also has been very positive at our events. It was great to see that expanded as Bobby came out and kind of spoke with all of the recreation staff. I thought it was, I unfortunately couldn't be there, I was flying back from Hawaii because someone had to be there. You know, but I heard nothing but a positive impact from, you know, the Chief of Police being there, kind of interacting with all of our very diverse staff, offering great insight. So with that, I just wanted to thank him and acknowledge him in front of you guys so you know, like, it's things like that that further strengthen our relationship, though. Thank you to Chief Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson, and again, thank you, Chief Davis, for always being connected to our community. Thank you. All right, I don't see anybody else signed up to speak, so I'll close the public comment opportunity. And next up, we have our City Managers' Report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. A few items to report on this evening. First of all, we have a big storm heading our way. National Weather Service predicts rainfall of an inch to inch and a half, maybe more, with strong wind gusts up to 45 miles an hour predicted. Public Works Department has set up two self-serve stand-bag stations for the community. Bags of sand are being provided while supplies last. There's a 10-bag limit per address, and visitors should bring their own shovel. The locations are at the city's courtyard, which is at 10250 Iron Walk Way, and that's open Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM only. And also at the future new library at the old Rite Aid building at 9260 Elk Grove Boulevard, that'll start beginning this Friday, March 10th, and that's open 24 hours through the end of the storm and while supplies last. Other really, really good news to report to the city council and the community is the City of Elk Grove has recently awarded a $6.9 million grant. It's a regional ATP grant. It's for our Laguna Creek Interregional Trail Crossing over 99. That, along with the earmark we received and other grant funds we received over the last several years, fully completes the funding for that project, so that'll get us all the way through construction. And so we're still working on design, we have other work that needs to be done, but we're really looking forward to it. We're anticipating at this point that construction will start in 2026, so we're still a few years away, but we have the funds now to move forward and get that project built. That would be a major milestone for us in completing that seven-mile Laguna Creek corridor connecting the east and west parts of our city, so we're really excited. And great work to our Public Works team. We've been told that through the SACOG process, our grant application was rated number one among all of the grant applications throughout the entire Sacramento region, so great job to the team that put that together. Let's see. The Elk Grove Animal Services will host their next drive-through vaccine clinic on Saturday, March 18th, from 9:00 AM to noon in the parking lot next to 8220 Longleaf Drive. No appointment is necessary, but residents will need to show a photo ID and a proof of residency. Veterinary staff will administer vaccines for dogs and cats, as well as free microchipping. Supplies are limited and offered on a first-come, first-served basis. More detail can be found on the city's Animal Services Facebook page. And the final item, tickets are still on sale for the Arts Commission's Blues Review scheduled this Sunday, March 12th, at District 56. The event will feature local performers playing classic blues. Details are on the city's website page, and that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Excellent, thank you for that great report. Any questions or comments? All right, thank you. We will move on to our next item. Is our consent calendar. At this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. I do not have anyone signed up for consent calendar, so I'll close the public comment opportunity and look for an approval for our consent calendar.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve, just adding a couple of comments. Wanted to draw folks' attention to, well, one, 7.12, which is what City Manager Jason Bierman just highlighted, which is our contract for environmental and design work for that Laguna Creek Interregional Trail Crossing, and then our acceptance of our annual comprehensive financial report, where we got stellar remarks. Councilmember Brewer and I just completed our audit committee work.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item.
On our regular agenda, we have no public hearings under Section 8, which will advance us to Section 9, our regular agenda action items and recommendations, and that item is Item 9.1, receive a presentation of the Elk Grove Police Department's 2022 Annual Report.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. My name is Bobby Davis, I'm Chief of Police for the City of Elk Grove, Elk Grove Police Department. Tonight, we're going to present, or I'm going to present, our annual report. 2022 was a big year for our organization and some of the things that we've done, created some changes, and I think you're going to see that here shortly. I promise to not make it any longer than an hour and a half so that we can get out of here. I have a few thank yous first. In creation of this, it takes a team effort. First, our management team that's here tonight, Captain Elmore, Captain Press, Paul Solomon, the Assistant Chief of Police, and Rodney Rigo is unfortunately not feeling well, but our management team is what guides this organization and guides us to the successes that we have. Secondly, I'd like to thank our department heads for the City of Elk Grove, all of the department's heads, and the work that it takes to create a successful organization, which is our city and our police department. We don't do it without any of the people working in this room. Second, I would like to, or I'd like to also thank the Elk Grove workforce, and specifically the police department, but the entire workforce, the people who are out right now protecting us, doing the things that they're doing to make sure that we can sit here in safety. I have to thank them as well. They are part of this annual report. And a special thank you to Andrea Cortez, Lone Braswell, and Lupe Marietta for creating the item that you're going to see here. The annual report, in large part, is a reflection of them with the help of Gabby Lang from my office. So I want to thank them as well, and now we'll get into this. Elk Grove, are we up? Yep, okay. I am technically challenged. So about the City of Elk Grove, as you can see, the first slide is just our park, and how beautiful our park is, and how fortunate we are to have an environment that we can provide safety to. The City of Elk Grove is located just south of Sacramento. That's second-largest city in Sacramento County. We have 42.2 square miles that we are fortunate enough to provide protection for. We have a population of 176,000 based on the 2020 census. We are an extremely vibrant and diverse community. Everywhere you look, you see diversity, and that makes us proud, it makes me proud to be part of this organization and provide safety and security for this community. As you can see here, we celebrate with our community in different events, different areas. One of my favorite walls in this city is the wall right here that you see at District 56. There is nothing about that wall that says anything other than joy and excitement and colorful as to who we are in this community. It's our council, Elk Grove City Council, in 2022, this is how it started, and then we added two new members, so welcome to us and our city. Chief's Advisory Board, and the Chief's Community Advisory Board, our CAV, is established under the direction of the chief. This group is a group of Elk Grove citizens, and they're a resource for me. They provide perspective and feedback related to community topics. All the things that happen in our community, they are that voice. They are also a support network for us. When we have things that happen, we can talk to them, bounce ideas off of them. This partnership allows for collaboration when developing strategies to address our community concerns. Our mission, it is to continually improve the quality of life in the Elk Grove through strong community outreach and partnerships, fair and impartial interactions, promoting public safety through prevention, intervention, and enforcement, developing and promoting a diverse and professional workforce, which we're doing, and you'll see throughout this, the theme is clearly diverse and professional. Right here is just a good example. This is our clinician, which is a very important piece of who we are, with our Officer Lealani talking to a community member. PSB, our Professional Standards Bureau, they're responsible for recruiting and hiring of our sworn and professional staff throughout the entire organization, and sometimes even on our, with our city partners, with their backgrounds that have to be done, we do that. PSB is responsible for the department's internal affairs process, which includes reviewing and investigating all of our complaints, and in addition, our PSB is responsible for the department's training standards. We hold ourselves to extremely high standards and in some cases exceed our post mandates for what we provide in our community. They oversee the field training program, reviews and update department policy. The Bureau keeps department informed of updated and best practices, best practice measures, and works closely with our city attorney's office, who we're very grateful for, on litigation matters, and maintain accountability and transparency. Here's a few pictures of us hiring this past year, and then we have some demographics. So our hiring demographics and statistics for 2022. 2022, we welcomed 41 new members and promoted six current employees. These new additions increase our total personnel number to 236, with 141 being sworn officers. Twenty, in 2022, our new hires, we had 42% female and 58% male. That number is significantly higher than most law enforcement throughout the country, and we're very proud of that. 2022 new hires, 27% Asian, 17% Hispanic/Latino, 5% Black/African-American, and 51% White. We have a very diverse group here. Total personnel, everybody that we've hired for the city, or for the Elk Grove Police Department, 45% are female and 55% male. Total personnel, 13% Asian, Hispanic/Latino, 19% Black/African-American, 9%, and 59% White. Internal Affairs, so our internal affairs complaint remained very low for a third year. This year, we had five total complaints. If you compare that to 2019, when we were upwards of 30, and prior years, 20 or 22, you can see that it's continually gone down. The other thing is, is that if you look at this year, the four of the five complaints were internal. They didn't meet the standard of their peers, and a lot of that action was reported, and they're able to be addressed, but I think it speaks to the compass that we have in this workforce and in our city. Of the 18, of the 1983 arrests that were recorded this year, in 2022, 83 resulted in the use of force, meaning that force was used in 4% of those. That is a low number. However, some of those forces that were documented were actually multiple forces on one, so say a risk control, TASER deployment, some sort of action with them, so it's potentially less people, just different uses of force, because it's all recorded now. Community engagement, I don't think there's any secret that we pride ourselves in being part of our community and how we engage with them in all aspects. These are just a few examples. Our breast cancer awareness vehicle, Visions in Motion, doing different community events. We're very proud of the fact that we can integrate with our community regardless of the level of the folks in our community. We take great pride in that. One of the other things that we're extremely proud of, and everybody in the room knows this is my favorite piece, is barbecue. And it's something that, with the help of Sergeant Jimenez, it was actually a conversation that took place about three years ago now, where we just talked about he was going to do barbecues in the beats, and that's where we took each beat for the police department, and we went out and connected with our community. Because over food, you can connect, you can solve problems and create relationships by simply sitting down and breaking bread with somebody, and that's important to us. So what we did was, we bought, we built, we bought and built a barbecue. That barbecue is, has been phenomenal for us in the police department and our community. It's something that we get great raves and reviews about, including making stickers, Sergeant Jimenez, with me or somebody looking like me barbecuing, and it has been a wonderful success for us. In addition to that, we're able to share food and cook for our city partners. We're able to share that with not just community, but also our city, our city employees. So we pursue these partnerships in our community, and it's important to us. So this is our barbecue in the beat. We will continue that this year as well, and in fact, we're starting to start to develop those for this summer. We have five more events this summer, in addition to other events that we'll be doing. And our patrol operations, so this is the bread and butter of the organization. This is what you see mostly in our community, you see our officers in their patrol cars. The Operation Division is our police department's largest division. We have approximately 63 officers assigned to the division. It's where all of our new police officers start their law enforcement careers and work side by side with the tenured officers. We have Special Operations. It's a specialty assignment division. This consists of our K-9 team, our school resource officers, special equipment officers, and Mobile Crisis Support Team, and the Mobile Crisis Response Unit. The officers in these units have specialized training specific to their assignment, and they're designated to provide the most appropriate response to various situations, and they're used, quite honestly, throughout our city and our region. We help our GALT partners as well. To be a member of one of these specialized units, you have to go through extensive training, extra training, if you will. So once you're selected, and in particular, we're talking about K-9, once you are picked, you have to do additional 400 hours of training before you're allowed to hit the streets with your K-9 partner. And you have to be able to do that and pass the test and training, in addition to actually getting the spot before you're allowed to go and do work in our community. Officer Scott and K-9 Graham joined the K-9 team in September of 2022. So our K-9 by the numbers, so we have 210 total deployments, 80 arrests, 54 suspect searches, and 27 K-9 demos. And I would say that while the others are a lot of fun, the K-9 demos are the ones that we get the most attention from our community because we're in, it's community engagement. It's that piece, everybody likes dogs, and it gives us an opportunity to show our community what we do, but it also helps break down barriers with a lot of the kids in our community, and I'll show you that here shortly. The next slide. So Safety Town. Safety Town is, which is organized by Problem Morning and Police Division, it's one of the 27 demonstrations completed by the K-9 team, and these are where we get the kids in our community and we help them, guide them through safety techniques and things that they can use at home and at school to be safer in our community, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. Did you know that Elk Grove has three dedicated school resource officers? So in the Unified, Elk Grove Unified School District, we have three of our officers who work within our city boundaries in those schools. We collaborate with the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office in a larger picture for all of the schools in Elk Grove Unified School District, but it's something that we're proud of. It is the fifth-largest school district in California, and it covers 320 square miles. So it is a very large school, and it includes 68 schools. And you can see here, it's more than just officers, it's us with our kids, it's us with our law enforcement partners, and our CSOs, and our CSOs, this CSO in particular is now an officer with the Elk Grove Police Department and started his career as a CSO here. In addition to that, in our Special Operations Division, we have unmanned UAS drones. We use drones in very specific ways and a broad spectrum, and they have been invaluable for us when it comes to looking for missing kids, missing adults, missing elderly people, laying out map grids, doing searches for things that, quite honestly, we don't need helicopters to do for us in that fashion. In addition to that, it's also set the stage for a platform for the Drone First Responder Program, which is something we will ultimately hopefully be able to do, which would lessen our patrol response times to be on scene in less than three minutes, and that would be significant for us in our community. Drones and the pilot team, we have 697 flight missions, 131 flight hours, and 26 crisis response missions. Some of those response missions were during the last, latest floods. We were able to go out, spot areas, work with our partners in the city, Public Works and some others, to identify areas that ultimately, potentially would be dangerous for us in our city. Levy breaks, things like that. Extremely valuable resource for us in our city. Another area of the Special Operations Division is our Mobile Crisis Support Team. It comprises of a mental health clinician paired with a patrol officer, and they have advanced training in mental health concern, conditions. This team responds to service calls where mental distress is considered a factor, and the team can quickly triage mental health incidents and attempt to de-escalate the situation or provide resources to get individuals that need assistance. It's been invaluable. We are now, part of the job is understanding some of the social work aspects of what we have to do when we respond to homes where people are in mental distress. This is probably one of the best de-escalation tools that we have. It allows us to not use force in many situations where in the past, we absolutely had to use force to gain compliance or help the people that were in the residence. This has been invaluable, and they handle 34% of all of our calls. That's a big number, which allows up the other officers to complete the mission of just providing our general safety and public safety for the community of Elk Grove. So this is an invaluable program, and something that we are going to expand in the coming year. In addition to that, we have our Special Weapons and Tactics Teams, our SWAT Teams, if you will, and our Hostage Negotiation Teams. Those are also active programs that we use with our tactical dispatchers to provide services to the community when there's a tactical situation or a hostage negotiation that needs to take place. And again, this also, we utilize, we share duties in our city, but we're also able to help Sacramento City, Sacramento County, and GALT all. They're interoperable when it comes to certain calls and things that they need, if they need assistance. Onto Investigations. The Investigations Division comprises of the Bureau, Investigations Bureau and the Community Resources Bureau. Investigation Bureau has five units. They have property crimes, person crimes, family services, street crimes, and forensics. Each of the units has a dedicated specialty-trained employees committed to providing victims closure, and I think that's probably one of the best lines in that particular paragraph is, based on the investigation of what happens after we arrive and how we're able to wrap that complete package up for our victims of crimes, it provides them closure. Whatever that closure might be, it gives us that opportunity to connect and ensure that there's a way for there to be, a way for them to move forward in the end. The Investigations Bureau has closed 504 cases in 2022, and you can see Iris there loving what she does, and she's pretty incredible. Family Services Unit works closely with Child Protective Services and WEVE, and onsite advocates, providing resources and a point of navigation during trying times. Having a "When Everyone Acts Violence" and so WEVE employee on our campus is a resource that creates ease in our communication between operations and investigation and provides a greater resource to the community. This creates a network to help ensure victims of domestic violence are not overlooked and have available tools, resources, and support. In 2022, Elk Grove Police Department, in collaboration with WEVE- In twenty twenty-two, Elk Grove Police Department, in collaboration with WEVE, reached out to one hundred percent of the individuals referred to the Domestic Violence Response Team. And that's a significant number. We left nobody behind when it came to response to domestic violence. We were able to provide with the help of WEVE wraparound services to those who quite honestly are looking for help and not quite sure where to go find it. And we're very proud of that. The Investigation, Investigations Division by the numbers, two hundred and eighty-three crime scenes processed, ninety-four missing person cases investigated and closed, a hundred and twenty-eight submitted, cases that were submitted with latent prints, and then six hundred and two cases investigated. We've been busy in the last year. This year, the, the Investigation Division provided forty-two outreach classes to the community. These classes include domestic violence awareness, working with victims in the healthcare system, and crime prevention techniques. Again, you're seeing that our, our goal, while we are public safety, we also are community relations. Community Resources Bureau. Community Resources Bureau consists of three units. Our POP, our Problem Warning Policing Team, Traffic, and Volunteers in Police Services. This bureau focuses on mitigating quality of life issues through collaboration and stakeholders, stakeholders to solve community problems. Here's a couple of our homeless outreach team officers heading out to probably make contact with somebody who is in need. Our Problem Warning Police Officers, our POP officers also known, sorry, Problem Warning Police Officers also known as POP officers can be found throughout the city investigating community safety issues, attending neighborhood watch meetings, and hosting youth safety programs. Many of these programs provide education to youth and caregivers. And some of the programs that we use are Project Lifesaver, Safety Town, Regional Safety Day, Etch and Catch, Citizens Academy, and Bike Helmet Giveaway. The Etch and Catch is a program where we engrave on catalytic converters, VIN numbers or license numbers to identify those if stolen and we're able to contact or find the people who are responsible, get those back, or report that back to the, to the victim so they can report that to insurance. Operation Crosswalk is one of our many POP missions that we have organized. This year, sixteen elementary schools participated in Operation Crosswalk. That was where we, as the police department, were able to go to those schools and actually walk kids across the street at crosswalks and just engage with them. And, and it's actually a lot of fun to get that opportunity to do that early in the morning with the kids. We were issued a hundred and fifty free bike helmets. Six hundred, I'm sorry, two hundred and fifty-eight children received gifts through the Toy Project. Sixty-two vehicles did the Etch and Catch event. And then four to five thousand attended our Regional Safety Day. And here again is some of the regional safety, Safety Town, Safety Day, things that we did at District Fifty-Six. If I haven't said it, District Fifty-Six is amazing. We use it for everything. And then the Explorer Program. This is where we're able to get young people involved in law enforcement or, or, you know, acclimated to what we do in law enforcement in their high school years. Fourteen to twenty years, year-old kids are who we target. We try to get them into the system, let them learn the Elk Grove way. And if they choose to join law enforcement, we hope that because we poured into them, they stick with us and stay within our community. It's something that we're really proud of and it's a really good program that we have, that we have here. Homeless Outreach is T, is part of the POP team and is dedicated to addressing issues related to the homeless population in Elk Grove. Teams equipped with enforcement options, but we seek to connect with those individuals who need assistance. Enforcement is not always the first option. These connections provide resources and solutions to support a path to housing and life stability. Throughout collaboration with our city partners, the outreach team is able to conduct cleanup operations with garbage removals to assist in maintaining the quality of life in the city of Elk Grove. And these are big numbers. A hundred and thirty-six cleanups, eighty-one referrals provided, five hundred and thirty outreach contacts, and fifty thousand six hundred and sixty pounds of trash removed from some of our cleanup sections. I will say that we have a program here where we issue cards or gift cards to some of the people who are experiencing homelessness. Many times they bag up their own garbage and set it out and we, with our partners in Public Works, pick it up and get rid of it. And these are some of those numbers associated with that. The referrals, did you know, this nice little thing on here, referrals describe the process of an outreach team member connecting with an individual experiencing homelessness to available resources. The resources include the County Homeless Navigator, winter shelters, transitional housing, navigation hubs, and rapid rehousing. The referrals to the homeless navigator are the most common, making up eighty percent of all of our referrals. And here's just a, a simple example of the work that goes into with our partners in the city cleaning up a space. This is under the highway at Ninety-Nine overpass between East Stockton and West Stockton Boulevards. We can see that the top picture is cluttered and the bottom is cleaned out. The significance of this is, this is just before the floods. And you can only imagine what that could have done, whether it's backed up on freeway or the highway or roadways, or just simply cluttered downstream. It's significant and it's not easy work and it's not work that a lot of people want to do, but we go out and we do it with pride. Volunteers in Police Services. You know, can't speak enough about the volunteers for the Elk Grove Police Department. Simply, a simple stat, six hundred and fif, six thousand five hundred and eighty-three hours of service. Essentially, if you were to put that into a dollar amount, it's a hundred and ninety-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars of services where our VIPS do vacation checks. They write reports, they work, helping do spreadsheets and budget, doing different things that truly affect community. And they become advocates for not just the city of Elk Grove, but the Elk Grove Police Department. And, and we can't do what we do without them. In addition to that, they provide funds through volunteer work to Sun Grove Church to provide Thanksgiving meals for over a hundred families. In addition to that, we have ambassadors for our community and the Elk Grove Police Department. It's a robust community resources program that we're very, very proud of. One of the things that we are also proud of is our trafficking and our response to traffic and traffic complaints in our community. As you all know, that's the number one complaint that we get, probably that you hear as well, is loud mufflers, speeding, in traffic areas in our community, our city, where cars are, are traveling faster and not stopping at stop signs. So for us, this last year, our unit has grown from, at one point when we lost Ty, we went down to four officers. And then from there, we moved forward and we said, how can we improve the education enforcement in our city? And it was looking at that unit and trying to restore it. As we sit today, we have nine working, actually eleven working officers, if you want to include our sergeants and our detectives. In addition to that, we are now in the process of training two more. So we'll have thirteen working the streets of the city of Elk Grove, which is going to allow us to have different shifts at some point throughout our day, having a greater enforcement or presence in our community when it comes to traffic and officers working our motor units in our, our city. It will absolutely enhance the safety in our community and it's something that we are continuing to strive to be better at and continue to work on. In addition to the nine motor officers, the traffic unit has two traffic detectives and a community services officer and one administrative assistant. All of these roles are involved in large-scale operations such as DUI checkpoints, event parades, and task force operations. Traffic operations specifically and traffic enforcement, we did twenty-five percent of their workload. DUI checkpoints was eleven percent, bike ped and motorcycle enforcement, six point three percent, distracted driving, which is being on your phone or doing something else is fourteen point three percent. And then DUI enforcement was forty-two percent, forty-two point nine percent, almost forty-three percent. And you can see the outcomes of that effort. In twenty twenty, we had a hundred and thirty DUI arrests in our city. In twenty-one, we had a hundred and sixty-two. In this last year, we had two hundred and twelve. I would suspect that number will be even higher in our city in twenty twenty-three. We're doing greater enforcement and ensuring that the people on our roadways are going to be as safe as they can be. And you see our officers here. And then Ty Linahan. So, sorry about that. So October twenty-first, Ty was killed by a DUI driver. Ultimately, Ty made the ultimate sacrifice for us, our city, his family. And it's unfortunate. However, we became a strong organization as a result. He began his career at the PD in two thousand and sixteen after serving as an officer in the city of Galt and Citrus Heights. Ty also served as a, his country as a United States Air Force member. And Ty was known as a community family man, dependable friend, and a man of faith. In honor of his legacy, several organizations paid tribute to him as a fallen hero. The local End of Watch Fund, charity hosted several events, Field of Flags, Cars Cookout, various things honoring him and who he was, what he represented in our community and the sacrifice that he made. And these are just a few examples. And these are going to be on our, our published annual report. And sorry about that. And you can see, you know, there was such a great outpouring for him, for our organization, from you, from all of our city partners and, and the community. This last December, Mothers Against Drunk Driving reached out to us last year and asked us what they could do and what we could do together in honoring Ty. This last December, a patch was created that you see here. The patch itself was in honor of Ty specifically. It, it has his number on it. It has a MAD emblem, has obviously that city of Elk Grove. And it, it captures who we are, what we are for our city, but it also captures, captures the importance of not drinking and driving. It's something that none of us will look at in the same way when it comes to enforcement and making sure it doesn't happen again. Here's a short video. I think ultimately you see his smile captures pretty much all that we would ever want to say about an officer in our community. That he loved what he did. He loved us. He loved our community. And, and he, he did pay the ultimate sacrifice. This is Ty and his family. One of the things that we did is we created a humanitarian award in his name, representing everything that he believed, everything that he expected from us in our profession and, and our organization specifically. And not everybody's going to receive it every year. But when somebody's nominated and if they meet that criteria, we will honor them in that way. It's something that Lieutenant Fuller, James Fuller, spent a lot of time working on with the help of the motor unit, identifying exactly who Ty was. And we're very proud of it. Animal Shelter. This hasn't been in the news at all this last year. Since the grand opening three years ago, the Elk Grove Animal Shelter has acted as a temporary home to thousands of dogs, cats, rabbits, birds, reptiles, and even some pigs. They are incredible what they do at the animal shelter and it's recognized regionally for the work that they do and, and all the things that they can provide to the city of Elk Grove and our families. Animal Services Officers work diligently to investigate and protect welfare pets throughout the community to ensure public safety as it relates to animals. This year, the shelter added new services, new low-cost spay and neuter surgery for Elk Grove pets. And that's the news for this community and what we have. I don't know that we knew how big our animal shelter would be when it was opened several years ago. It's incredible. And the work, and when we talk about things that are important to us and our community, our animals are. And they provide a service that is truly phenomenal. Animal Care Supervisor Skibby, that smile and the way he's holding that cat is exactly who he is every single day. And he brings a smile to everybody's face who has contact with him. In Animal Services, we have seven thousand and forty-three licenses issued, one thousand four hundred and thirty-six animals adopted, three thousand two hundred and twenty-five vaccinated animals, one thousand thirty-five animals fostered. And I was a foster parent myself for an animal. I'm proud of that and I have that cat at home. One thousand six hundred and fifty microchips administered and three thousand three hundred and fifty-two animals-related, animal-related calls for services they responded to. And that's a significant number. If you look at what's happened from twenty-one through twenty-two, it's gone up twelve percent. We went to, our, our animals vaccinated were two thousand eight hundred and eighty-two. And you can see the services provided this year. And when we talk about news, that's the news. It's the importance of what this animal shelter has meant to us in our city. Three hundred and, three thousand two hundred and twenty-five, seventeen percent increase. Support Services. Support Services comprises of three bureaus, our Property and Evidence Dispatch and Records. These bureaus provide a vital role in providing factual information, assisting with court proceedings and conducting the processing in compliance with state requirements. In addition to that, our dispatch center is that first call, that first link to community and safety when something happens. And we had, we responded to one hundred and seventy-seven thousand and eighty-six calls for service in our communication center. Ninety-six of the, ninety-six percent of those calls were responded or answered in fifteen seconds or less. So that first contact, when you're in dire straits, we're able to provide that service at a very high level and we're very proud of that. Dispatch. A hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-six of those calls are non-emergency. The others were, the other fifty-four thousand nine hundred were nine-one-one emergency, we need help right now, calls. Total call volume this year was down five percent. And, and between the transition of last year and this year, we created another means for people to contact us, and that is online to write reports, a call tree, if you will, that would triage some calls that didn't have to go through dispatch to get service. As you can see, that helped with some of the call volume in our dispatch center this past year. Thank you to the call taker and the response unit. I know you're busy today and it still helped out. Amazing work. Some of these, as you read through our annual report, you will find that we have comments in there from our community. That's because when an officer responds to a home, we have a program that is called Spider. That program provides feedback through a text message or communication with the people who call and they provide feedback on our service and who we are and what we do every day. And I will say, we hover between probably seventy-five and ninety percent of customer satisfaction on every call. And those are really good numbers considering the volume that we have. And we're very proud of that. And at this last month, we had over a hundred and thirty calls and only six calls, people weren't necessarily happy with everything that happened, but all the rest were positive. So I think we had, we show that our quality in our work product is what's paramount to us in our community. Our Real-Time Information Center. Real-time information is something that we consider extremely fortunate to have in our city. Our Arctic is, as you know, a part of, a critical part of our infrastructure. How we provide information to you as our electeds, to our city partners and our regional partners. The Real-Time Information Center for the city of Elk Grove has been nationally recognized. This has happened over the last three years. We have grown into this resource for all law enforcement, actually all in community. During the most recent time where civil unrest was taking place, the city of Elk Grove was utilized by the New York City Police Department in information that was being provided, meaning that they use, they look to our Arctic to provide some information that was fed nationwide. That's pretty significant. We've been nationally recognized through conferences to the work that we're doing and the services we provide to our community. It's something that we could not have done without the support of you as our council and our community. In addition to that, they also work with our officers when it comes to providing intelligence-led policing. ILP focuses on data and analysis to evaluate crime activity and effectively deploy resources. So it's another way for us to not waste money and provide a service through technology that advances our support and response to our communities. Crime Statistics. In twenty twenty-one, the California Department of Justice began transitioning from the Uniform Crime Reporting, UCR, to the National Incident-Based Reporting System, NIBR. NIBR collects a broader base of crime classifications, which includes victimology, location, time of day, and if the incident was cleared. With these expanded classifications, departments can develop enhanced statistics to provide a more pointed view of crime and develop strategies to increase public safety. While these methods of collection differ between UCR and NIBR, a comparison was completed which shows both violent crime and property crime have decreased, decreased in the city of Elk Grove from twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two. Crime reporting through NIBR is much more comprehensive. As you can see, person crimes includes multiple areas, but specifically for this slide, it's homicide, robbery, and assault, seven hundred and three. Crimes against society are drug violations, weapons, law violations, and animal cruelty. And again, there are more categories in those, but those are the ones that are for this particular slide. Property crimes, burglary, vehicle theft, and larceny. Largely, we consider a lot of quality of life crimes. And you can see the numbers there are three thousand four hundred and ninety-six, five hundred and two, and seven hundred and three. 703. In comparison to the UCR, how it was previously reported out, we just had property crime, or we just had violent crime, which doesn't truly break out the aggravated assaults or domestic violence, or things that are other categories that are now captured. But you can see through the numbers, if you just looked at the UCR numbers, the violent crime was down 26%, and property crime is down 15% between 2021 and 2022. This is our annual report at a glance. Forgive me for running long, but this is who we are, and we're very proud of the services that we provide for the City of Elk Grove with and in conjunction with our city partners in what we can do. So thank you very much. Are there any questions for me?
Wow. Excellent, excellent report. At this time, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. I don't see anyone signed up for item 9.1, so I'll close the public comment opportunity. And I'll start to my right with Councilmember Robles. Any questions, feedback?
No question, Chief. I just want to say thank you. And thank you to all our law enforcement. You guys put your lives out there every day on the line, and it means a lot. It means a lot to the city, looking at the crime rates and everything you've been doing. I'm proud to say, you know, our police department in Elk Grove is something special for us, especially around the region. As the second-largest city in the region, you know, we're doing everything we can, and you're the first face that everyone sees. And I'm glad to see the diversity in our police department, too, because it does reflect our city. So thank you so much for everything you're doing. You know, I can go on and on, because everything that you hit, for me, is near and dear. You know, from your community engagement, to the special operations, to investigations, community relations, even to the real-time center, all of that's vital in who we are as a city and who we are in the region, from helping out during the floods, you know, from having the aviation and drones and all that. So I'll keep my comments short, but I just want to say thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Brewer?
I want to agree with, I agree with all the comments that Councilmember Robles had mentioned. And the report that you gave is very eloquent, because it tells the story of and the maturity of the Elk Grove Police Department, and everything that has transformed, has evolved over the years, and how the police department continues to evolve and continues to serve the city. Because we all firmly believe that Elk Grove is really about families in public service and public safety. And you brought us on this journey in a very, very beautiful way. And I can't say enough about taking time out to recognize Ty. I think a lot of us felt that punch in the gut when Ty passed and still with us to this day. And I'd really appreciate it, you walking us through that, because I know it was hard. But the courage and the loyalty that was displayed, and continues to be displayed, is something that we should never lose sight of. And I want to thank you for that. So thank you for this report.
Thank you, and thank you for those kind words. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brewer. We'll go to Councilmember Soon and then our Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Chief, for this, I was going to say great, but you know, I mean, that just kind of simplifies, you know, what this report is all about. I mean, there's so much in here, all the work that you've done. It really sends a message to how dedicated, you know, you and your whole team out there, how compassionate you are for the community and the pride that you have in the profession, the law enforcement profession. I've always had great pride in our police department, and I think, you know, right here is what you see, not just the results, you know, but it's the way you do it. I mean, I know, you know, the pictures are, you know, you put the pictures in there, but it's real. I mean, you're out there in the community, you're engaged in the community. You show the community that you're part of the community, and you care. You care. I mean, I think that's what a lot of, you know, folks out there want to know sometimes, is their police department care, and you demonstrate that. So not only are you protecting us out there, but, you know, in these small moments, you know, you're showing you care, and we've all seen it. You know, when you're at a community event, or if you're riding by the skate park sometimes, you know, you see some of, you know, the officers out there engaging with our youth. So it really speaks volumes to what this department and the men and women in this organization, you know, they view it more than their job, and I can't stress that enough. And, you know, for Ty, I mean, we all miss him, and we don't know him as well as you all do, but the work that you do and you've done this past year, you honor him. You honor badge 281. And then I also just want to quickly give a shout-out to, you know, the VIPS, the volunteer in policing, that, you know, again, allow another opportunity for our community, our residency, to get to know our officers and work with our police department. It just shows, all these things just show the interwovenness of what the department is for the Elk Grove community. So I'm just very, very proud, very proud. So an honor to be a part of this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So one of the things that I think is really obvious, that's different about Elk Grove, is that our Elk Grove residents absolutely value public safety. No doubt about it. You and I had an opportunity a couple months ago to go to a neighborhood meeting, and it was a neighboring city. We'll just simply leave that, that it was, there were other folks from other cities. And we were talking about, you know, what it is that the police department does here under your leadership. And there was a lot of surprised faces. Some of the things that we do here are truly groundbreaking, right? And in a different interaction I'd had with someone once, they were, well, they weren't, they weren't a fan of the police, let's just call it that. And they'd said, you know what, law enforcement should have, you know, a crisis response unit. You should have clinicians go forward and be there. And I said, that's awesome, really good idea, because guess what? Elk Grove PD does that, right? Well, you should have domestic violence, counselors, and you should, got that, cool. You know, we got that. And so a lot of the things that many people are clamoring for, we are fortunate to have here in the city. And so I appreciate that very much. Something that folks don't necessarily think very much about is really about the drones, and they, you know, how are the drones helpful? Well, you know, when you have the opportunity to get a bird's eye view on something happening right now and not put someone, or not put an officer at risk, right? And that even adds further safety to whoever is, you know, whoever needs assistance, right? Sometimes just getting that bird's eye view. Sometimes it's the difference between telling, or understanding if it's a kid with his fingers pointed, or somebody with a gun in their hand. And those interactions, knowing what that is ahead of time, those interactions then become safer. So I really appreciate that, and the, you know, the drone as a first responder, I think will be even more helpful. I'll touch on the Arctic before I get on the last one here. Well, I do want to make sure that there are so many people who are not here today. There are some folks who are back answering calls, or there are some people doing reports. They're not always seen every day. They are an absolute important part of making all of this happen, and they often don't get the appreciation that they should. Of course, we all love our furry little animals and the animal services. It's not been an easy year for them on a few instances recently, but I just want them to know as well that I appreciate them and that our furry little friends and our feathered friends, too, we can't leave them out, you know, we appreciate them, taking care of them. But specifically on the Arctic and intelligent-led policing, that's another element that is groundbreaking, as you mentioned, much like with the drones. When you have the ability to, oh, guess where some problems may occur, and you have the ability to be there, right? We can't be everywhere, right? But we can say, oh, I think there's going to be a problem here, right? And to be in position or near position is really helpful for that. And so floods, fires, riots, the Arctic has proven itself to be absolutely fantastic, and ILP as a portion of that is really, again, changing the game. Interactions, right? I mean, there's no way, really, to quantify how many interactions every day law enforcement has, whether it's driving by on the road and someone sees them, or whether it's actually having a conversation with them, or sometimes whether it's having to, you know, exert some force, right? There's no way to quantify how many of those there are. Okay? But I'm going to guess, I don't know, probably hundreds of thousands of interactions in a year, right? It is astounding to me how low the number of use of force is relative to that, and not even just the use of force, but the lower levels of use of force. It's incredible. I know that you are out there, that the PD is out there doing fantastic work every day, and so I appreciate keeping those interactions safe. Because at the end, I know that everybody wants everyone to go home safe at the end of the day. So my last thing, and I had to save it for last, because I'll get all emotional. I should have brought myself some tissue, not just you. Holy crap. Yeah, well, you can keep that. What happened with Ty, of course, is, you know, is a reminder of the dangers that officers and, you know, just civilians face as well on highways with DUIs, right? It's part of the statistic of more arrests is a bit concerning, because, oh my gosh, are there more people out on the road driving drunk, or are we doing better? Let's go with it. We're doing better. We're doing better at catching them, right? But it's, you know, Ty's death was a reminder of that, and we should never forget that we do have a PD that's out there putting their lives on the line for us. I do want to thank Ty's family for their sacrifice. And since I'll get choked up. But my hope is, and I don't know that I'm going to say this the right way, so I apologize if it sounds offensive, but I do hope that soon we'll get to a point when we think of Ty, the first thing that comes to our face is a smile, or a giggle, or a laugh, not a tear. I'm going to stop there on that. But last thing, thank you very much. We appreciate you. I appreciate you. I know that the residents of Elk Grove should feel damn lucky that we have your leadership. We have your leadership team. We have a whole host of people on the streets and a whole host of people behind. So thank you for your dedication.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Giving myself a moment here. Thank you for that excellent report. Exceptional. Today, I had the privilege of serving on a panel for Law Enforcement Legislative Summit with our Police Officers Association, and I proudly spoke of our Elk Grove Police Department. And it was timely, because I knew this report was coming before us this evening. And I got to share how proud not only we are as city council members and as a mayor, but as the community, that relationship, that engagement, building of trust, that is something very special that goes on here in our city. So I want to thank all of our police department, with you, all of our officers, and as our Vice Mayor so eloquently stated, all those that we don't see and see their faces, but they are critical to the operations in keeping our community safe. So I wanted to recognize all of the great work as well. It is something special here in Elk Grove, and I also want to thank my colleagues that we have such a positive relationship, that we are not making politically charged statements that endanger their lives and our residents' lives, because that is not the case nationally, or in other cities in our neighboring communities. So I want to thank my colleagues also for your dedication to public safety. It also starts with all of you. So thank you for also stepping up and being so supportive. Just some of the highlights that I wanted to just do a shout-out on. It's great to see the diversity in the hires, not only the increase in women serving, but of course, the diversity in general, so that our police department can reflect the community that it serves. So I really loved seeing those numbers rise. The low number of IA complaints, that is quite remarkable. What would you attribute as the, you know, what do you attribute to that decline in numbers? Is it that proactive relationship, or what's happening? And how do we learn from that so we can keep doing what we've been doing?
I think it's a communication piece from management to our middle management, to our supervisors, to our people working in the streets, and the level of training that we have and support. Ultimately, we will have interactions, we will have contact with community, but all of those don't have to be necessarily physical contacts. It can be a conversation, it can be a de-escalation, or whatever it takes to achieve the mission without complaint. We are very fortunate in the leadership that we have with our command staff, to have a message that is equality matters. And, you know, I think in some situations, we put ourselves in the people's shoes, or walk a mile in somebody else's shoe before you make a decision. And ultimately, I think that's what allows us to be successful. Our numbers have continued to go down. You know, sometimes IAs come in, and there are complaints that come in, and there are things we can't do, but we also give our supervisors an opportunity to do corrective action in the field, address those complaints with community and with the officers to get them better at every opportunity that we have. And I would say that's probably the majority of the reason of our low numbers and success with the numbers not having come back up.
That's remarkable work. And then I loved seeing the use of force data with overwhelming being the lesser of the force that's used. I think that that's quite remarkable as well. I mean, it was very disproportionate in terms of what we saw, so that is great news. The community engagement, that is definitely one of my favorite and the highlights for me, because again, you're helping to build trust in the community. Those barbecues and the beet, those were wonderful. I attended all of them, and the turnout was great, seeing the children, seeing all of the families coming out and enjoying a beautiful day, but interacting not only with our police officers, but our firefighters were often there as well. And so that partnership is invaluable that we have between PD and our firefighters. So just great work there. Just, again, loved seeing all of the interactions. The patrol operations, I don't know if all of my colleagues have gone on a ride-along, but I highly encourage that. You get just a small measurement, a glimpse of what it's like being out there in the street and keeping our community safe. I look forward to continuing to do more ride-alongs. The SRO program, as a former school board member, those are invaluable. And those relationships and having the best and the brightest on our campuses is incredibly important, because those interactions with law enforcement are sacred when it comes to our youth. And if those are positive interactions, they take those sentiments with them. And so having the right officer at the schools makes all of the difference. I have seen, you know, in years past, when that wasn't the case, and it wasn't someone from Elk Grove PD, but we didn't have that. But improving our oversight, at least with the school district, but making sure that we get officers that know how to engage with our youth, and creating those positive interactions, which is very important to me, not only as a mother, but as a former school board member and as mayor, is to create those kinds of opportunities. So that's great. The mobile crisis support team and the triage for mental health reports and the incidents that you've shown and the DS- and the incidents that you've shown, and the de-escalation. That's such a volatile time, and a lot of things go sideways in that critical moment. So I just love that we have a unit that supports this and really not only de-escalates that intense situation, but can also provide those services that are needed. The homeless outreach team, being able to see the humanity in our homeless population. That's quite remarkable in providing the connections and resources that they may need. But knowing their names, and I know so many, so many of our officers actually know their names. They're real people. They're not a statistic or a number. And that, that speaks volumes. Just see the humanity, no matter who it is. Whether it's a, it's a homeless person, to a young person, to a business person, anybody, to treat them with kindness and respect. So I, you know, kudos to the team and just great work. But, you know, seeing that the violent crime is down 26% and property crime is down 15%, that is a lot to be celebrating in our city. We are a safe community, and we are a community that attracts a lot of people to come here because of our high quality of life. And I want to thank Elk Grove Police Department for being a critical component to that high quality of life. You all do exceptional work, and I'm just so proud to be your mayor. And all of, and thank you all for the great work that you do. And I would be remiss to not, of course, talk about Officer Ty Lenahan. Thank you so much for including him in this report. Because we can't ever forget not only the tremendous loss that our city faced, but how our community came together, how we came together as a city, as a police department. It's not easy to talk about that pain, that loss, because that smile is eternal. I proudly have his picture in my office, just here in City Hall. Because I don't want to forget his sacrifice. I know the decisions that we make here every day impact you. And we want to make sure that we not only his, honor his memory and his legacy, but we honor you every day to make sure that you are safe. So thank you. Thank you for this great report. Thank you for all of the great work that everybody does. Just proud, proud to be here and proud that you're leading our police department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, very much. And, and thank you for the wonderful words, "Ty will never be forgotten." There's no doubt about that. And I would be remiss if I didn't say that the work is not about me. It's about the organization, it's about the people that work in our city, are on our streets right now doing the work. I just am very fortunate to be the person who gets to present what we do to you. So thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for everything.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right. We're doing a standing ovation. Thank you. All right, with that, we will transition into item 9.2.
And as to consider appointment of five members to the Measure E Citizens Oversight Committee. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council Members, I'm Jason Lindgren, your City Clerk. The item for tonight is, started back on January 25th, in which we passed the resolution to create the Measure E Citizens Oversight Committee. That created five positions. We have 19 applications. We have several of the applicants in the audience ready to speak tonight, so I will let them present their story. But all the applications have been forwarded over to the City Council for consideration tonight, and we can open up that floor to the speakers.
All right, very good. All right, well, thank you, everyone. At this time, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. We have a number of speakers signed up, and just as a friendly reminder, each speaker gets three minutes. We will start with Dr. Martha Burnett Collins, followed by Brett Bartholomew.
To Mayor Singh Allen and Elk Grove City Council, good afternoon, good evening. My name is Dr. Martha Burnett Collins, and I'm applying for a seat on the Elk Grove Measure E Citizens Oversight Committee. We met before when I applied for the Diversity and Inclusion Commission, but I didn't make it, but I was the runner-up. I was really proud to be considered. Now I'm back again, ready and willing to serve my community. On February 27th, along with my neighbor, I attended the community conversation on homelessness and met Jason Berman and Matt Pauline, and they both urged me to apply. Name drop. I've been a citizen of Elk Grove for 30 years and have voted in every election. Though, through life skills, I am a viable and qualified, I feel I'm a viable and qualified candidate for the appointment to this committee. As a retired Air Force officer, I have knowledge of the inner workings of the government, and I am able to foster buy-in from all participants and can move the committee forward to, to a common goal. Okay, I have a firsthand knowledge of finance. My husband and I built our home from the ground up in the Hartstone Van Rutten gated community. We came in under budget and we did it economically. Let's see, I make my, I have my own kind of business. I'm called a fill-in optometrist. I am retired, but I kind of make myself available. If an optometrist is sick or is going on vacation, they can call me and I'll fill in for them. Let's see, I raise children, and they're successful adults. And then most mothers bring to, can know how to multitask. They have skills of budgeting, anticipating issues, solving hurdles, and getting the job done. I will bring these, these skills with me to the committee. A sense the community is a very big part of me, I'm a member of the Elk Grove Ladies Online Group, and we meet different, different restaurants for Taco Tuesdays every Tuesday. I'm a member of the Alpha Caparata Society for over 40 years, and for 20 years in the Elk Grove chapter. My motto, "Keep your dollars circulating in Elk Grove." Okay, the job of Measure E Oversight Committee is to review the revenue expenditures of the funds generated by Measure E, view the annual independent audit of the city performed by an independent auditor, make sure the proposed budget lines up with the community's identified needs and priorities, prepare annually report and present it to the City Council regarding revenues and expenditures. The letter E in Measure E is a perfect letter to, to sure, make sure the committee stays on point. E stands for eyes. There'd be five pairs of eyes to provide oversight on the priorities with the citizens of Elk Grove deemed important. E stands for expenditure. We will make sure the money has been used, for example, to help address and maintain public safety, parks, streets, general community services, and keep communities safe. E stands for equitable. We'll make sure some of the money is deemed to address homelessness so they no longer feel helpless, handicapped, or heartbroken, but will feel hopeful, happy, and handsome. The Bible says the poor will always be among us, but it does not say the poor will always be among us in Elk Grove. Lastly, the E stands for Elk Grove. Elk Grove will be a premier place to live. With these funds, great things can happen. I predict firefighters' response time will be shorter, therefore keeping us alive longer. I predict crime will be reduced because there will be more police on the beat, patrolling neighborhoods, and making friends with our neighbors. With crime prevention programs, I predict the youth will join the gym instead of the game. I hope I am successful in this appointment. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm missing that Air Force blue.
All right, next up is Brett Bartholomew, followed by Jennifer Hammerland.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council Members. If you don't know me by now, my name is Brett Bartholomew. I just want to reiterate my interest in applying for Measure E Committee. I've lived in Laguna West for 15 years and a lifelong member of Elk Grove. I'm active in the community through the Elk Grove Anti-Trush. I'm an ambassador to the Elk Grove Chamber, and I'm a board member with Project Rad. For the past three years, I've been a sales rep and a brand ambassador for my family's winery and vineyard, Christopher Sellers Bartholomew Vineyards, where I've gained experience with budget analysis. My, my and my family's involvement in partnership with local government has allowed me to take a look inside the inner workings of government, budgets, staffing, and resources, and how it correlates to each jurisdiction service to residents. I've attended all four of the public workshops for Measure E and have a good understanding of what the community wants and needs. With the impact that this new influx of tax money will have, I want to make sure that it is spent with the benefit of the entire community. The city, CCSD, business, and residential communities will all be well-served with my participation in the committee. Being raised in the Methodist Church, we are taught to strive to strengthen the community through service to others. Keeping the neighborhoods and parks clean and helping new businesses has been a priority of mine. I continue to be involved in the fabric of Elk Grove, and I'm interested in assuring that my son Theo and other people's offspring continue to thrive in Elk Grove. I want them all to know that Elk Grove is safe, clean, beautiful, and offers appropriate housing and jobs for all. Through my time with Elk Grove Anti-Trush, I have met members of the community from all neighborhoods and seen firsthand the need for and the benefit of increased interaction with the CSD and city engagements. I'm interested in exploring more deeply the concerns of the residents within our city so that we can best utilize our existing resources, along with the expected $21-plus million for Measure E. I've held multiple jobs in the past that allowed me to develop my sales and marketing skills, as well as my people-friendly approach to issues. As a sales representative for the winery and as a chamber ambassador, I have formed relationships with businesses in Elk Grove that I feel will be beneficial to the committee. In closing, I have been a loyal Elk Grovean who will continue to be faithful to the needs of our community. My experience has given me access and relationships with the business and residential communities, as well as CCSD and city staff, that will substantially help the committee in making sure the Measure E funds are spent, not just for the CCSD and city functions, but with the business and residential communities as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bartholomew. Next up is Jennifer Hammerland, followed by Diane Lampe.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members. My name is Jennifer Hammerland. My husband and I have been citizens of Elk Grove for almost 20 years. Our home is in the Stone Lake Community of District One. We have two children that attend schools in the Elk Grove Unified School District. From a professional standpoint, I work in public service as the current Budget Chief for the California Public Employees Retirement System. From a community involvement standpoint, my children have been members of local casumnis, community services, district swim and soccer clubs. From a service standpoint, I have been a foster parent and a Girl Scout leader and volunteer for many years. From an advocacy standpoint, my oldest is legally blind, and I've had to advocate for them as we've navigated the school system and the community. In these varying capacities, I have worked with many different people from diverse backgrounds with varying viewpoints. I am respectful, thoughtful, have an open mind, and seek to find common ground. I enjoy working with others towards a common goal. In preparation for this opportunity, I've attended and reviewed materials for the Measure E Citizen Outreach Forums, heard the identified needs and strategies of city department leaders, and listened to my fellow citizens' priorities and suggestions. I've read the code section governing Measure E, reviewed the most recent City of Elk Grove Annual Financial Report, and reviewed the annual reports produced by a similar oversight committee for the Elk Grove Unified School District Measure M. I am qualified, and I am motivated, and I would be honored to represent the citizens of Elk Grove on this committee. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hammerland. Next up is Diana Lampe, followed by Eric Wally.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council Members. My name is Diane Lampe. And I reached out by email to each of you, but I also wanted to speak with the public so that they could hear the things I have to say as well. I stand before you as an Elk Grove resident attending tonight to submit my application to be considered for a part of this Oversight Committee. I did participate in the Measure E Community Advisory Meetings that occurred prior to the election. And I was very happy to see that this did pass and that we are going, our city is going to benefit from these funds. As current Board President of Elk Grove Heart Homeless Assistance Resource Team, I'm an active partner in collaboration efforts in our city that impact quality of life daily, including with our Elk Grove PD. And as we all do our best to positively impact the quality of life, including working with the different city departments that are part of that as well. I believe my background working in school districts with children and youth and collaborative efforts between school districts and mental health programs, as well as my current efforts in our city with our homeless, make me a good candidate to be a part of the committee overseeing this exciting and critical funding that will impact the quality of life for all of our residents. In my work world and now in my volunteer world, I've worked with grants, budgets, and dedicated government funding. We, within our organization, have several grants that we are doing with the city at this time. I greatly appreciate your consideration. And I also want to say, especially listening to our report from our EGPD tonight, we are a city of best practices. And I think this funding is just another example of what our best practices are. And it's, whether it's me that's in a part of this committee, or whoever it is, I think it's really important that we have Oversight Committee, and I look forward to what's going to happen in our city from this funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Next up is Eric Wally, followed by Marilyn DeRuen.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members. Good evening. As you know, I'm Eric Wally, and I appreciate this opportunity to expand on my application to serve on the Measure E Citizens Oversight Committee. I believe that my experience and my expertise qualify me for this important work. My family's lived in Elk Grove since 1990, and I have a strong desire to contribute to the quality of life in our community. My degrees in Business Administration in my career includes many years of pertinent professional work, including 20 years with the Elk Grove Unified School District. The last 16 of those years were in the Fiscal Services Department, where I initially served as the Financial Analyst for the Facilities and Planning Department. And then in 2017, I was promoted to Manager of Facilities Accounting. I retired from that position in May of 2020. Throughout my years in fiscal services, I, with staff support, monitored the revenue flows from several funding sources that supported a stream of multimillion-dollar project budgets. I did not determine which projects would receive funding, but I did monitor the contracts and expenditures. I ensured that restricted funds were budgeted only to appropriate uses and that budgets were in place prior to contracts being encumbered. The bottom line, really, our mantra, was always to be audit-ready, and we were. To support the oversight of that work, I prepared numerous financial reports for a variety of governmental bodies, as well as for the school district's Measure M Citizens Oversight Committee. I presented quarterly reports to that committee detailing how the general obligation bond revenues had been allocated and spent in accordance with the purposes described in the ballot measure. I've been retired for almost three years, mostly COVID years. But last month, I enjoyed participating in the series of excellent community meetings where staff from the city and the CSD presented survey results and solicited ideas on a wide variety of potential uses for Measure E revenue. Since the Citizens Oversight Committee will review and report on how those funds are actually used, I'm confident that my experience with audits, fund accounting, and complex budgets would add value to that work. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wally. Next up is Marilyn DeRuen, followed by Hollis Erb.
I'm sorry, my little speech went away. Good evening. My name is Marilyn DeRuen, and I am a retired citizen of Elk Grove. I retired in 2020 from Santa Clara County, and I moved to Elk Grove to be near my youngest daughter, who's lived here for 18 years, and my youngest grandson, who attends Laguna Creek High School. I understand that Measure E requires mandatory financial audits, and also that this committee is just an advisory committee, just sharing information and helping. And I also see that the funds will be used to address homelessness and crime reduction, which I am very familiar. I worked as a liaison for foster, homeless, and juvenile justice youth in Santa Clara County, and working with their families as well. Sorry, I'm nervous. Providing services, advocating for their rights as it pertained to state and federal laws. My work afforded me to work with the former Vice Mayor, Chappy Jones, who is from Sacramento County. Also with judges, district attorneys, probation officers, social workers, and others. My job also allowed me to have extensive experience in budgeting. Our department was funded by state and federal grants. So we had McKinney-Vento funds, which were for homeless, foster youth grants, and also Title I Part A federal funding. I was also involved in yearly budget planning, which included our salaries, as well as benefits, to provide services to youth and families we served, which included trainings, workshops, county collaborative stakeholder meetings, annual events, as well as state and national conferences. We did annual reporting to the state, which involved data collection and tracking of services provided, events, meetings, trainings, as well as numbers served. As some of you may know, some of our foster youth have become homeless through their system because they didn't want to be in group homes or foster homes, so they would run away, and they're on the street as well, some of them now. Even though there's a lot of resources today, they still fell through the cracks. I was also instrumental in writing the grants, gathering information, and data collection. a collaborative partner with the other 31 school districts there in Santa Clara County, as well as social services, mental health, legal advocates for youth and children, as well as CASA. The college liaisons, we had the Foster Youth Success Initiative liaisons, as well as county collaborative meetings with other Bay Area counties.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much for giving me this chance and opportunity. I'm so nervous, I don't know why.
You're doing great. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. All right. Next up is Hollis Herb, followed by Sharon Anderson.
Thank you very much, Mayor Singh Allen, and Vice Mayor and Council members. I am applying for a position on the Citizens Oversight Committee. I have dedicated myself to trying to learn more and more all the time about my adopted city of Elk Grove once I retired and moved here to the city in which one of my sisters had lived for a great many years. And so I continued to visit with her and learned that this was indeed the place I wanted to be when I retired. I immediately began involving myself both with my local HOA, but also because I had nine years of experience on the Planning Commission where I used to live, I began regularly preparing for and attending the meetings of the Planning Commission, to the extent that I even went driving around to look at properties. And I often made comments, and I'm very proud to say that as a member of the audience with no vested interest in particular motions other than the betterment of Elk Grove, I had the delight of occasionally seeing my comments incorporated into changes in the available motions. For my HOA, I set up a liaison committee that reached out from my HOA to CSD Parks. I became involved as a volunteer in my local park, and I am on the Lighting and Landscape District Advisory Committee, which I have chaired since its inception. As part of that, I've had the pleasure of also seeing many more locations within Elk Grove because I took to heart the parks assessment task that the committee took on. And I made a point of going out and seeing as many parks as I could, meeting as many people as I could. I have an extensive history back east in Ithaca, New York, of public service both within my academic discipline, but also within simple community service. At one point, I was chairing the local volunteers group of the American Heart Association, and I got there simply because I moved up from CPR instructor to instructor trainer. I served on the, what is equivalent, rather, of the general plans of my own municipality, but then was appointed to be the representative from my municipality to the adjacent municipality, which we sort of surrounded, and it's very important to integrate in that form. I am proud of the Agriculture and Farmland Protection Report that was incorporated into our general plan, in which I made a big point of learning from our local farmers what was going well and what wasn't and what they needed. I have always been a community service person and a good team player.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next up. Thank you. Next up is Sharon Anderson, followed by Alan Vito.
Hi, Sharon Anderson. Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Council members for letting me speak. Listen, you've got an entire list of wonderful candidates and applicants, and I'm here to, of course, speak in favor of somebody that's like a popcorn kernel or whatever. And literally, you put it, you put it out there, and it just blooms. You know, you just get what you want. Brett Bartholomew is just that kind of a person. I mean, he's like a sponge. He will learn. He's active in the community. He, his heart is in the right place. He's young, malleable, and I think he can help really do some transformative stuff with the Measure E Citizens Oversight Committee. I believe that candidate in particular is, is one you don't want to pass up. Also, he's a friend of mine.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Our final speaker is Alan Vito. If anybody else wishes to speak, but hasn't, now's your time to fill out a slip in the back. Oh, I saw a hand raised?
Yes.
Okay. Yes. For item 9.2.
Sorry.
Excellent.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, thank you so much for the opportunity to come up here and speak to you. I've, I've had the pleasure of meeting you all personally, and I also had the pleasure of attending the four community meetings regarding Measure E, and I got to see Chief Davis speak about, you know, some of the needs that the police have. We've actually gotten to work with, we have a small family business in Old Elk Grove, and we've worked hand-in-hand with the police, and we've actually recently, we, we had an, had, had an opportunity to see them in action and see just how great they've, they've kind of, I mean, they, they handle situations so calmly and peacefully and just like professionals, like you would, you would hope your police force would. And I think, I hear some of the things that they request from Measure E, and I see how it can work small, hand-in-hand with our small business. And in my small business, it's Bob's Club in Old Town, Old Town Elk Grove. I worked there with my family. I don't have as long as a resume as some of the other applicants because I am only 25 years old, but I think what I've accomplished in my small time here in Elk Grove is definitely something to be proud of. Since I turned 21, I was here working with my family business, doing all kinds of different things, and, and behind the scenes, payables, receivables, inventory, doing all of our payroll and whatnot. So I have a lot of different experience with, with financial documents, and I also have a business degree out of Sac State, and I am also a Realtor, residential and commercial. I currently am in escrow with the Wrangler Bar, so that was a difficult transaction. So I've got a little bit of, a little bit of experience with homes and with commercial properties and businesses, and then being in, in business in Elk Grove myself, I think it gives me a unique perspective that I can bring a lot to the, to the committee. And the main thing, though, that I, I noticed going to those, going to those committee meetings, the community meetings, I saw a lot of people who devoted a lot of their own time. They got to volunteer, and I hear tonight people who have volunteered years of their lives. I'm so young, I haven't had a chance to volunteer my time yet because I've been working since, you know, since I turned, got out of college, just nose to the grindstone. But now this is, I feel, my opportunity to start volunteering at a young age and to bring my unique perspective and my skills to the community, and I really think that I will be an asset. And I am young. I haven't gotten older and jaded. I haven't had any too many experiences that have made it where I think, I think I'm, I have a lot of enthusiasm and a lot of years to, you know, you guys can use me while I, during my prime. And so I really think that I have a lot to bring to the, to the committee. And as far as my, as far as my resume goes, I really, I haven't had to apply for any kind of white-collar position since I graduated college because I was just working my family business. But looking back at my resume, I think that the most shining achievement I have is just the fact that I grew up getting pulled in a wagon through the streets of Old Town, and I have cried, and I have bled in the streets of Old Town Elk Grove. And not, and I really, I just, I, I want to work closer with especially people like our chief, Bobby Davis. If I can do anything to help them, I would love the opportunity, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Judy Covington, followed by Christine Soto, who is currently the last speaker. So if anybody else wishes to speak, please sign up now. Welcome, Ms. Covington.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and to the dais, and thank you for the report that you gave. I really appreciate it. My name is Judy Covington, and I did apply for the Measure E Citizens Oversight. I applied because I want to give back to this community. It's not that I haven't given back to the community. I've, I've done it in different ways. My experience, I am on the Board of Directors, first of all, and you need to know I'm a real estate broker. I'm on the Board of the Records for the National Association of Realtors, the California Association of Realtors, and I am the past president of the Sacramento Association of Realtors. I do have experience in working with members, which the members to me would be our community, our 178,000 members that are constituents that we have here in Elk Grove. The National Association of Realtors have 1.5 million members, largest trade association in the world. The California Association of Realtors have 185,000 members, and the Sacramento Association of Realtors have 8,400 members. So I have the experience of working in governance and policy with all of those associations. I have worked on, have been appointed by presidents of the associations to be on task force and working with different policies to, to implement, and my biggest thing is, is housing, and housing for all, and fair housing. And the commission, or I should say, Measure E, is going to make our community safer, is going to bring more people to our community, and the fact that 54.3% of the community did vote for it and 45.7% of the community did not, we still have to serve everyone. And with that, the $21.3 million that we will receive annually, it's ongoing until someone decides that we don't want that anymore, which we don't want that to happen. We want the integrity of this council that had the forethought to have it, have those funds to be local. We want that to remain, and we want to be transparent in all that we do. I think my experience and what I have done over the years will contribute to that, so thank you for the opportunity.
Next up is Christine Soto, and the final speaker currently is Brian Powell.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Council members. My name is Christine Soto. I am one of the many applicants that have applied. I have lived in Elk Grove for 19 years, but my family history goes back to 1849. I'm a descendant of the Chilean gold miners that came here to Sacramento, so I have a very vested interest in this community. The larger community of Sacramento, I went to John F. Kennedy High School, but my family was in the marching band. We were, we were pretty big back then. But my children were raised here in Elk Grove, went to school, Laguna High School, and my children are grown now, and I'm also retired from the state of California 35 years. I've been retired four years, so I do have time to focus on this very important Measure E and carrying out the goals and objectives. I have experience, for example, working for the Women, Infant, Children Program, which is a federally funded program. I oversaw the contract unit, which, and in various capacities at WIC, seeing over $200 million of federal dollars flow through, down to 82 local WIC directors, which I oversee their contracts, their five line out of budgets within each of those contracts, and it was a multi-year contract. I partnered with invoicing, and also over that partnership, helped oversee the end-of-the-year audits of each of those contracts. Also, when I was at the WIC program, I oversaw all the vendors or the grocery stores, mom-and-pop grocery stores throughout the state, which also dealt with contracts. So I'm very familiar with federal and state law regulations, and I do have a passion for budgeting and also making sure the dollars are allocated, encumbered, and used according to the citizens and what they voted for. So I'm very excited. Also, I have family members in firefighting and law enforcement and military, so I'm also very interested in helping represent the, the committee on the safety component and also other measures and components of Measure E. But I am really proud to say I, I, I am a citizen of Elk Grove. It is a very diverse city. My daughter actually works here for Apple. She had an opportunity in a promotion to move to Texas, but she chose to stay here in Elk Grove, and she's wooed about five families from San Jose area, in the Silicon area. So this is, so I'm here to stay, and in the capacity of my leadership and management and collaboration, I work really well with the executive staff, and I worked at the California State Teachers Retirement System, which is where I retired from, and I also worked for the California Public Employees Retirement System in my, my career, long career. I also worked on a major state-of-the-art phone system that was implemented and that had vendors that we partnered with, and it was really key to upgrading our phone systems at the time and provide the customer service to our, our teachers. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Soto. Our final speaker is Bryant Powell, unless anybody else signs up. Bryant will be our final speaker.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members. My name is Bryant Powell. I am a casumus firefighter here in Elk Grove. I was a 16-year resident for, in the city of Elk Grove, and I was also a lateral firefighter from the city of Sacramento here in 2006. The reason I moved here was because of the services and everything the city of Elk Grove provided. Also, I wanted to live and work local. I thought that was very important. What I'm here tonight to talk about is Valerie Irwin, and she is unable to be here tonight because she is sick. So if she was not, she would be here, and she would be talking in front of you, probably doing a lot better job than I'm doing right now. It is my pleasure to recommend Valerie for the Oversight Committee for Measure E. I believe that her knowledge, skills, and abilities that she has obtained over her vast experience in dealing with the casumus CSD in her time that had been here, serving under four chiefs, Chief Grunberg, Foster, Hanson, and McLaughlin, has provided her with the necessary experience with budgets, municipal finance, government service models, along with the knowledge of local businesses and communities within this area. She's been a longtime resident. After retirement, retired from the casumus, she showed no signs of slowing down. She continued to work with, continued work as an executive assistant for the California Chiefs Association. She's the Director of Administration currently, right now, for AP Schreiten, and she also is the Community Outreach Manager for the Elk Grove Food Bank. Because she cannot be here tonight, I am asking you to strongly consider her for, as a member of the Oversight Committee for Measure E. As a former citizen of Elk Grove, colleague and Vice President of Local 522, I feel that she is a, will be a great addition to this committee, and thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Powell. And that is our final speaker, so I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity.
Wow. Five seats.
This is, this is hard. And I have to say and recognize, this is probably the most compelling pool of applicants that I have seen since I have been your mayor. Just quite remarkable, quite remarkable. I want to thank everyone that reached out, that either, you know, reached out via email or called, called colleagues, reached out to colleagues, showed up tonight, those that could, attended workshops, to show your interest. All of those things are important in this tough decision. Some of the criteria I looked at, I discussed already, but that geographic diversity is important, just diversity in general is definitely important because we are a very diverse city. I reviewed all of the applications. I looked at the various, you know, the, the criteria and looked at all of the ways many of you served in different, either boards and commissions or volunteering, all very commendable, the service to community. This is a partnership that the city went down with our CSD. And so when I talked about Measure E, I've always talked about having that collaboration. And so I stated last time that their feedback would be also important. So I want to thank the CSD, not only for the partnership, but also the feedback on this tremendous pool of applicants. Looked at not only council districts, but also the CSD director districts as well to see where there might be some overlap. So there's, there's a lot of criteria that went into this very, very difficult decision. And then who really best would be able to address some of the issues that we've identified with Measure E, with public safety, homelessness, economic... some of the issues that we've identified with Measure E, with public safety, homelessness, economic development, focus on parks and roads, and so many of our other areas of interest that the community outlined that was that were important to them. So that broad base of experience and that lens is also important. Before I bring forth the names, I just want to put out there that I will be requesting my colleagues after we vote on five members, I have another consideration for us after this. But but I just wanted to let you know that I will have an ask afterwards. And also the feedback from the community, that was also equally important. So we can start just going down districts. We have five spaces. And like I said, this was a very tough decision, and so many wonderful applicants from District One, which is quite, I mean, as you know.
I get to brag this time, District Four, you know?
There's it was one Elk Grove, but yes, we did have an overwhelming desire coming out of District One. And so there was a lot of, like I said, a lot of great applicants. The person that, and I would love to hear your feedback, the person that I intend to nominate for consideration is Judy Covington, who not only is very involved locally, but her experience with the Federal Taxation Committee, I think, provides a great lens for this governance oversight committee. But her her experience in governance also is quite remarkable. But I can give you a lot of honorable mentions. But and if you have someone else in mind, I at this time, I will recommend Judy Covington for District One.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I mean, I I would not disagree with that. I would wholeheartedly support Judy. But to your point about honorable mentions, I mean, there were so many people out out here today and who weren't out here today. I saw, you know, Andrea Clendenberg had applied, and she's been very helpful in the past. But Hollis Urb and Jennifer, who, you know, we spoke beforehand, too. So Hammerland, there's, yeah, there was there was many folks, again, from District One, Brett Bartholomew as well. But I had Judy on my list as well. So I know you had a tough choice.
Yes, thank you.
I support that.
So that's my nomination for District One. My nomination for District Two is Alan Vito. Not only is he a local business owner, he attended all four of the workshops. And that's quite commendable and remarkable because that provides that broad base of experience and bringing also that Old Town voice, having a representative from your district. And the district not only is rural community, but of course, East Elk Grove. And I think that he would be an exceptional addition to this commission. Any thoughts on that, Mr. Brewer?
I actually like the choice. I think District Two, we had two really good candidates that that definitely stood out. And I really thank Martha Burnett Collins to to return and apply for the Measure E Committee because of that passion that she has and also what she brings to the table with her Air Force background and her and her business acumen through as an as an optometrist or as an on-call optometrist. But I think what Alan brings to the table, and I think it was, and I appreciate our conversation that we had because what I learned from Alan is his dedication to Elk Grove, his work behind the scenes in the community in Old Town. And he does, and his business sense is definitely one of an old soul and something and something that I thought that was that we had in common that I thought that would be a really good opportunity for Alan to be on the Measure E Committee. So I like that. I like that pick.
Thank you. For District Three, again, exceptional candidates. But I've been really impressed with one person in particular who's sort of a rising star in our community, and that is Sister Helena Madera Silmi, who is not only with the Al Misba Center resource, she's a resource director there. She's a Rotarian with Laguna Sunrise. She did attend some of the workshops. Unfortunately, she could not be here this evening. She is out of town. But she had not only a wonderful application, but we've had wonderful conversations about her passion to serve on this committee. So she would be my nomination for District Three, but I would love to hear your feedback as well, Vice Mayor.
Absolutely. And I strongly support Sister Helena. That, you know, there were three fantastic applicants.
Yes.
From District Three. Ms. Wheat is, she is absolutely fantastic. She has been very involved with the city over the years. She is not always one that is going with the with the popular opinion. But that's okay. That's called government, right? That's called participation. And so I really appreciate her applying. And of course, Valerie Erwin, she is, I know her well, I've had the opportunity to work with her and with the food bank and several times. And so all in general, you have a really, really difficult one. We, you know, you always hear people go, oh, there was a really great bunch of people. Oh, it's so awesome. It's great applicants. I mean, the folks that you listen to here today, if you're not impressed, you should be.
Yeah.
Truly. So you had a really difficult job, and I support District Three, Sister Helena.
Thank you. And District Four, again, great applicant. But again, going back to diversity, diversity in in the makeup of this Oversight Committee, we have a great API person who is very involved in our community. He's a retired police officer. He goes by the name of Coach Harry, unfortunately, and a family emergency kept him away tonight, so he did send a note. But he's an active coach in the community, who not only serves our youth, but also works with refugees. And like I said, he's a retired police officer. And I would love to get your feedback, but for District Four, Councilmember Robles, for moving Coach Harry or Harbinder Singh Kangura as his formal name for the District Four representative.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you to all the applicants. District Four always comes out and always performs. I would like to say that the best people live in District Four, but the best people live in Elk Grove.
That's right.
That's awesome. That's great. There you go.
The best people live in Elk Grove. And this is never an easy choice. But I did receive an email from Coach Harry before. His wife is a nurse in the ER at Kaiser, and he's retired law enforcement, too. And he's also a coach. I fully support this because public safety and public service is it's in that bloodline. And this is going to be something that we're going to need, especially moving on, moving forward in the future. So I fully support that, Mayor.
Thank you. So then inevitably, there'll be one sort of at large, if you will, because we have four districts and someone, there's going to be two at least from a district. And of all the applications, really, for me, someone that stood out because of not only their active engagement in the community, but their passion, and that's Ms. Hollis Urb, retired professor, very active in the community, Laguna West Association, Chair of CSD, LNL Advisory Committee. And I thought you were one of the most compelling applicants. Not that everyone was very compelling, but my goodness, the breadth of information that you provided, the details, I just so enjoyed. It's the first time I actually met you was just a couple of days ago for the first time. And what a wonderful asset you are to our city. I want to thank you for choosing Elk Grove. And I definitely think that you will be just a wonderful addition to the city as well. So that would be my fifth recommendation. So I will move all five of those nominations for our council's consideration this evening.
Happy to make the motion or second your motion.
Second.
Yeah.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right. As I said in the beginning, I have another point for your consideration. With the concurrence of this council, I actually would like to request that the staff bring back an amended resolution at the next meeting, increasing our committee membership to seven instead of five. And a lot of that has to do, not only because we have a great pool of applicants, that's that's something we're going to always face, but truly want to honor our relationship and partnership with CSD and some of the names that they brought forward. I would, I will mention who I intend to nominate next week or at the next meeting. But in order to do this procedurally, I need to have a resolution brought back. But I intend to nominate at that meeting Brett Bartholomew, who attended all four workshops, lifelong resident, very involved with the Chamber of Commerce and Project Ride, and of course, our anti-trash group. And the second will be Valerie Erwin. Not only is she actively involved with the Elk Grove Food Bank, but of course, as you heard earlier from Mr. Bryant, just her commitment to CSD and our firefighters in the fire department. So those would be the two additional names for consideration. We're not voting on those this evening. The only thing we will be voting on is an amended resolution to expand the committee from five to seven, so that we can have just a stronger group overseeing a very, very important, you know, measure that our citizens voted on.
I think that's a great idea, Mayor. I mean, we talked about the five representation with districts and at large, but you also mentioned earlier the partnership that we have with the CSD. And so I think that extra two also kind of lends itself to broaden beyond just just our city. So I would wholly support that. But I would I would also just ask that everyone here, again, if you weren't chosen, please stay involved. Many of you are involved in the community now, and some of you were chosen, and some, we've heard them from for the first time, that we know have a lot of talent. And there were, I wish we you were around when we had the the funding from the federal government from COVID, and we were doing the analysis then. So it just shows like there is there will be an ongoing need. Things will come up. And so we're glad to see you out here. Please, please keep coming out because there will be an opportunity.
And to your point, Councilmember Soon, you heard that wonderful presentation from our police department. They're always looking for volunteers. They can use you today. And you, I'm sure you were all impressed. And if you're looking for ways to serve, I can't think of a better place than our police department. So please see Chief, please see Chief Davis at the end. And if not, this, please reach out to me. But I think this has to be worded a certain way. So I'm going to turn to our city attorney to see what the motion needs to include.
So it's not a motion. It's just direction from the city council. If you want to bring this back to the next meeting, assuming the next meeting is when you want to bring it back, we can do that. You can't act on it tonight because one of the agendas for an amendment to the resolution. This was just appointment. But with the council's concurrence, we don't need a formal motion. We'll bring it back with a proposed amendment to add seven members.
Right.
Or whatever number you want, but we'll propose seven.
Seven. Yeah, seven members. And then, like I said, just publicly, that the names that I will be bringing forward are the two that I just mentioned. So do we have agreement on that? A nod of just to give him our city attorney?
Yep.
Go forth and prosper, John.
All right. All right. Then with that, we'll go on to our next item. Thank you, everyone, again. Our next item are.
Section 10, Council Comments, Reports and Future Agenda Items.
And let's see, we'll start to the left this time. Councilmember Soon.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Just last week, we had our Transportation Committee for SACOG, of which we awarded the $6.9 million for our interregional trail crossing. So very, very happy about that. And we'll finalize that. We'll have to finalize it next week at the SACOG Board Meeting. So thank you. Oh, and I'll let Councilmember Brewer talk about our Councilmember Robles, talk about our sewer district meeting today. Thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Councilmember Brewer?
So last week, or at least the last two weeks, or two weeks ago, Vice Mayor Spies and I attended Sacramento Public Library Authority Meeting, where we did the evaluation for the for the executive director, which came back of glowingly positive. And we also set up our budget subcommittees for the for the authority as well. And it looks like we're going to be on, we're going to be moving forward in a lot of those different directions in a positive way. I'm a member of that budget committee, which they took five willing souls. And I was actually, I was actually willing to take the job. So I'm looking forward to diving in with the with the fellow directors on the joint authority to to make things more work a little bit better, but also make sure that we're doing our part to make sure that that we're putting our best foot forward for Elk Grove. And then earlier today, Councilmember Soon and I participated in the Audit Committee, where we had a very clean bill of health. Our fiscal picture was looking strong. And it's and I couldn't be more pleased with the presentation that we received and and how we're looking good going going towards the future over the next three, three to five years.
Councilmember Robles?
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier today, Councilmember Soon and I attended the sewer district. They talked about, gave us an update on what they will be doing as far as water and as far as I had it in my notes, and I totally forget, was it?
The Harvest Water Project?
Harvest Water, there you go. The Harvest Water and how much money we're actually saving because of the Harvest Water. That briefing was really good, and they'll be providing outreach to the citizens of Elk Grove in the near future and on some of the development there as well.
Okay. I had a meeting with SACRT STA tomorrow. Other than that, busy, busy, everyone. So thank you, everyone, for your reports. And thank you, everyone who joined us this evening. At this time, we will go ahead and adjourn our meeting at 8:10 PM.